Yeah. Tonight at two, whatever, one and three broadcast.
Actually, yeah, I don't get your address.
Okay, we'll start off with the Gummel Farms approval letter. The updates have been, the updates apparently have been made that we talked about last week.
The date, the number of sheets we've confirmed, fueling stations, fueling positions, we made that distinction. And the plan, the page on which the O and M plan shows up in the site plan.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any more comment about the letter itself, not about the project?
Nope, we're all set.
No. Okay.
Well, I think so. We've got two sets of the plans there.
That's all you can carry?
I've got, she's got the five other ones, they're already in her office. Those are the wet ones and those are the ones with the signature lines also, so.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we gotta do that.
Yes.
But I think there's only two sheets on the first page and as C F G.
We pens, the other pens were.
These are better than, yeah, exactly.
Better than all of them.
Since there's what, twenty-three pages, is that what we?
Yeah. Let's start signing.
Yeah, we can lay them all out. Well, let everybody fill in their votes, how they voted on the waivers as opposed to the project. Fill it in as you recall. Or not.
I hope it's the same.
I think we knew what we wanted.
I think it was two, there were two now, but it's still passing. You can reload it. Well, I need to make sure this one I write.
I think there's only two pages or three guesses, or part of the pages. The ones that we're adding, yeah.
Well, no, the ones that were signed.
Other ones, this one and this one, just those two. One and four.
Oh, look over there, don't worry about it. And we're gonna get all the other ones, or is that?
All seven?
He's gonna, he's gonna make copies.
I guess we could do all.
We'll keep one side, he'll take one side and then make copies.
What day is it?
Well, should I?
Well.
Should I bring, get the other one back?
Nope.
Is that made it back to the sign?
No, we don't have to sign all of them?
Right, there's no.
Can you make copies of these? Scan them and then.
I think he's gonna keep one of the copies.
Coming up, coming up, coming up hill, like. I think that might be off seven up where it's not a policy, you're gonna be able to see that and then this one.
No. Yes.
That's it, it was just, well, there was two sheets. There's two sheets and there's two girls. What was the date?
January ten.
Number eight ten.
Oh, two ten.
Two ten.
Changed it. Okay, I got the number right, got the month right.
So.
She hasn't signed yet.
She hasn't done it.
Is it? No.
No, the letter.
For the vote part, listen. I didn't.
Oh, you signed it. Yes, me also. Well, that would make the difference.
Okay, we're, okay, great, we get the votes.
And did it right?
Yeah, we did that before.
Are you gonna, are you gonna scan these in, like, get a digital copy of some, some?
These plans?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's already digital copies available.
A signed digital copy and then?
Uh, we could, if, if we take one back, I mean, I don't know, I just talked, you know, in sheet, if, we can take one back and then we can have it scanned in and then we can send a fully signed.
Perfect, that would be terrific for us.
Digitally, so that.
Because then we know it's the approved copy and all that.
Fine, and we've updated, obviously, the revisions to be January twenty-fifth, so the last revision, then only two sheets changed, but the whole set is.
The whole set's updated.
One, two, five, and that's what you've got.
Okay, so you want, you'll take one and get it.
Why don't you take this one over here, the date right.
Yes, oh, the date was right on.
Well, I put one.
I corrected it.
Oh, okay.
Say that again?
One of the dates I put January instead of June, but it's been corrected, so we'll do the clean, legal one.
You don't have to say that.
Good one, good one.
Actually, if you could come back and give a lesson on our bylaws.
This is on Wednesday, right?
I think I give you my agenda with the letter. Is it the last sheet of the letter is now the agenda of the meeting? I don't know where my agenda went from.
Take it, I'll get one more.
It's not like they grow on trees. All right, so we can be out of here by eight twenty-five if we do this right? All right. Z B A information, okay. Let's do a quickie on the Z B As. Did anybody review them besides just read them? Or even that far?
I read through them, I didn't have time to draft any letters on it yet, though.
Well, so, when's the meeting?
They're scheduled for the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Next week.
So my next meeting is the twenty-fourth, I know that's kind of close, but I suppose we could.
Well, we can discuss them.
Yeah, we can discuss them now.
And then we can.
And then I can draft it based on people's comments, too. So that won't, it won't change as much as it has in the past when I've forgotten things and you guys have corrected them.
Whatever, just make sure that we get them to them.
Yes.
Please. See, being, I don't know, I'm not, I try.
Yes.
Then we, last, what do we do, we did something to try to get them to them, like, I didn't, I wasn't gonna be the one to do it.
You didn't send the.
We emailed it to them.
Well, you can just take them, here, you can just review and tell them what we say.
Yeah, but you didn't send the mail, you said you will send the mail.
I thought they signed something and then they're just gonna put it in their mailbox.
We can do that, we just have to do it this time.
Oh, did you check your mail?
No, I think I sent something by email.
You can sign it and give it to me.
We'll make sure that we get it to them is all. As far as the petitions that are there, North Main Street.
Do the first one, yeah.
They talked about, I'm sure it's in our packet.
I just wanted to know where.
Watermark Antiques.
I know, but where?
I, doesn't say that, I assume it's in the back parking lot. But that's the concern that I had, the same idea was.
Is there access?
Yeah, and they're backing up.
There is a small access going in the back.
There's no area to back up when you're not going, backing up onto the right way of road.
It's a very small access.
Yeah.
One car can go in, yeah.
Sure.
And the, I did look at the place, there are five parkings in front, in front of that store. So those parkings, you know, when the car pulls it, it's in one forty. So there is nothing there.
But in the back, I don't know what's in, how much, how many feet are in the back, that's what I wasn't sure of.
There's no site plan, right, there's not enough information in the packet.
Yeah.
And also, if it is, you know, where is the office for this building? Are they going to have the antique business over there?
There is one already.
Are they going to have it or are they going to close it?
Is this the gold place?
Yeah.
The gold?
Yes.
Okay.
One forty.
Yeah, around Route one forty, so I guess the questions are, where is he gonna do the sales, right?
Yeah, sales office.
Well, where's the office space and where are the sales?
I would think the office.
Where are they gonna store the cars, I mean, if he's gonna have one car, he needs, I think, I'm not sure how many spaces according to our bylaws for, how many spaces is required for the, for the sales of auto, automobiles. But he's gotta have some parking for the people coming in, so that's.
In addition to the cars.
It has to be, it has to be in the back.
Right, and, but he also has, has to maintain the parking that's required for the retail space inside the building.
Is he the only one in there?
That's one, you know, he has five parking spaces.
Well, he has five parking spaces, but is that all the retail on the downstairs and then there's space upstairs, or?
No, I was thinking, you know, that's for the, the antique store.
Okay, well, we, I, we can think, we just need to submit it, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm, you know, primarily, you know, they may have used that space, front of the business, five parking space, they used it for the antique store.
Yep.
Yeah, but there's space, there's storage in the back area, and I'm not sure how much storage there is, so.
Yeah.
What are they anticipating, for how many cars at any time were they anticipating to be there, I, I'm thinking that it's gonna be antique cars, uh, which I don't have a problem with.
That'd be pretty cool.
Right, I, I wouldn't have a problem, I'm guessing, it's Watermark Antiques, I'm guessing it's antique cars.
Oh, is, is, are Watermark Antiques staying in place, or are they moving out?
No, 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 that's a business.
No, I assume they're staying in place.
No, that's a business.
It says that's who.
They have a gold and there's some other business.
Well, like, on the other, the one we got before, they said there was a garage located, but that got ripped down and rebuilt.
Oh, I was assuming that they were doing that on that property with Watermark.
This is, this is located on the premises, but I don't know that it's staying, I mean, I, it could be.
I assume it's staying.
No, 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 they want to buy, sell, and store used cars.
Right, but doesn't he wanna keep the existing?
Yeah, I guess presently located on the premises is or are Watermark Antiques, but it doesn't say that they're gonna stay. But this is a division of their government.
Stay.
I mean, it's, we can go either way.
Oh, oh, I could say, yeah, I guess so, because I was assuming they were staying and that they just wanted to expand.
Right, well, but if they're gonna be selling vehicles, you don't wanna have your sales in the back of the building where no one can see it. I mean, I didn't even realize, until this came in, I didn't realize there was a driveway on the right side, it's only like eight feet wide.
Right, yeah, there is.
It's a, that's really a limited access.
It is, that's why I thought, it's like, you know, you throw it up on Craigslist or whatever and it'll be stored back there. So I guess how many cars, how much feet in the back?
Yeah. Parking requirements, parking provided. Access we have, lighting is, lighting and displays or any of that stuff?
Yeah. Yeah.
And what, and it's zoned commercial business, okay.
It's zoned commercial.
Yes, but this is all, I think this is a historical district.
No, he put it like commercial and business.
Yes, but it's also, I think it's also, I know Oakdale has historical background, so.
But we're, because when they were doing the Oakdale project, they didn't, they thought that maybe that Oakdale, we're trying to, it might have been in a historical zone.
Yeah.
But it's not, I think it's further down.
It looks like we have a lot of spaces.
Closer, closer to this site.
I think it is.
Let me see, I think we have a zoning map.
That's the sound like image.
It'd be nice if we had a map in this room.
We can, it's not just our room.
I know.
It would be nice if we had a projector, we could.
Yeah, between.
Yes, sir.
Is, there's already a business there?
One car.
The gold, go, buy itself gold, right?
Antique and.
With the snow in it, one car.
So, is that gonna be?
That's what we don't.
Is it gonna be a pure business?
We don't know, I was thinking, I was assuming that it was gonna be a, do a business, but we don't really know.
I thought it was also like, that gold place was also like a pawn shop, so I'm wondering if it's, people could pawn their car in it, you know, I wonder if it's related to that.
No, not they, not the, not they can take that.
I don't think it's a pawn shop.
No, they buy and sell, they don't pawn, they, they'll buy, well, I don't think they pawn, I think they just buy, like, silver and gold.
Oh, really, I thought that came up when they were talking, you know, that by, the, the police bylaw that came up?
Yeah. Yeah.
The, the, the change to the rule that says, if you're gonna pawn anything, they gotta take pictures and copies of your license and all this kind of stuff, it sounded like that, this was one of the ones involved.
Oh, okay, it's possible, I didn't remember that.
Is there a sign that they buy firearms or something?
It was, I, I thought there was buy anything or something, but I don't know, I can't remember.
Is this place right before where you would get out to one ninety?
No, second to center, across from the church.
No, it's down by the rail trail, across from the church, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, we have a bunch, we have a lot of questions.
And the other thing, on the top of the store, is it an apartment or?
Oh, and what's said on the second floor, right, we don't know what's on the second floor, so that's, we want that, so, and also, historic district is not a zoning district, so it wasn't on the zoning map.
Oh.
Oh.
But that's a question to ask. I'm pretty sure that's, it's either next to or clo, or in, because I, when you look at the building, it looks pretty historic.
It looks like an old, yeah.
It is all, used to be apartments.
And the D C is, no, not.
And what about this, their, their classification that they came up with?
What do you mean, classification?
They put it like a, this commercial.
Those uses in harmony with the general purpose of the intent of three point two retail business not involved in manufacturing.
Yeah.
Is that a, a?
Yeah, I don't.
That they fall in and they're establishing themselves as?
Yeah, they could.
This one here.
F one, outdoor sales.
F one.
F one.
It's F one?
Yeah, this whole. One is retail, one is not involving manufacturing.
Yeah, so it is.
Maybe it's more like F eighteen.
Outdoor sales such as motor vehicles or wrecked vehicles. And that's, but that's not allowed, is it? That's allowed with a special permit in business.
Oh, yeah, so they're doing the wrong one, because this is just allowed.
Well, no, this is, right. Yeah. No, but they're looking, isn't F one?
F?
Automobiles? Just retail business.
No.
Right. Involved in manufacturing. So what is F one?
That's F one, F eighteen is the vehicle one.
Yeah, so F one has pretty much nothing to do with it.
Well, it probably had to do with it before, when they were just a store.
Yeah, well, it was allowed, they didn't need a special permit.
Yeah, that's one of the thing I was thinking.
We like the gold place, that probably falls under.
They don't need anything.
But they didn't need a special permit for that.
Right, because that's, right, exactly.
Yeah, but the F one, they don't need anything, F one is fine.
So for this, this Form B?
Yeah.
They have three to F one retail business not involving manufacturing, that's F one, that's right.
That's what they.
But then on this other page, buy, sell, and store used cars.
He'll also F one.
That seems to me to be F eighteen.
Yeah, well, the even is, the proposed use is in harmony with the general purpose of the intent, the proposed use is the F eighteen, not the F one.
Right, right, so this item number six on Form B really isn't addressing the question.
Should be. Actually, it's not appropriate because, but if it's F one, he doesn't even have to go for the special permit.
He hasn't answered the question. Right, but it has, yeah, he's, he made a statement.
So he doesn't have to fill it out.
Yeah, F eighteen.
But it's the, but the proposed use, he has to give some reasoning why it's in harmony with the bylaws. And he hasn't given one.
Probably, everybody should, maybe he didn't feel he had to, because he did it wrong, or put the wrong classification.
No, maybe he thought in a retail business not involving manufacturing. That's a retail business, buying, selling a car.
But.
Yeah, but this F eighteen is more appropriate.
Agreed, agreed.
So.
If he put F one, he doesn't need any permits.
Right, so you, you could bring that up for me.
That's the first thing I thought, why he need a permit?
Right.
I didn't go to that table.
So we have to, I have to try to word something that.
Make some changes.
He's required to get a special permit under.
F eighteen.
At two, three point two, F one eight, instead of just one.
Three point two. Right, and so his. We'll see what the, the notice is, so if he makes a notice in the newspaper and it's under.
Oh, that's true. Actually, that was in the email.
Right, so if it's not done correctly, I don't know what legally, whether they can hold a hearing, but.
Hmm.
I'm not sure.
Do they know, they don't have to do a butters, do they?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, as long as they did it, as if it was eighteen.
They did, I didn't catch all the butters.
Right, but they're, if, I mean, that's what they're, but if they're asking for an F one. That, you're on butter and you say, okay, well, they want to just do a retail business, that's fine.
That's all they wanna do. Yeah, that's okay.
But if it's something different, I wanna know, so that's where the more restrictive, less restrictive stuff comes up.
Oh, actually, yeah, we should send them the note, so you can get in touch with them and say they gotta re.
Well, it's not ours, it's the Z B A.
They stay at home, but I mean, that could be what they wanna do.
Yeah. Because we could mention it in the letter.
Yeah.
They can make their own determination. Right. Right, that's what we.
Correct comment about that.
I have a question, is there anything in the bylaw that says, like, he's gonna be selling, buying used cars, is there anything in the bylaw that says how many vehicles he can get out on the premises?
Um, I don't know, I don't think so.
I mean, he was, is he gonna be fast there?
I'm not aware of anything.
Could fill the place out.
Yeah, if he has enough space, he can put a hundred cars, as long as he has enough space for a hundred cars and the required amount of parking associated with selling a hundred cars. So like, if you're gonna sell a hundred cars, you need parking for whatever, twenty, let's say twenty vehicles, I don't know what our zoning requires, but you then would have enough spa, have to have enough space for twenty plus a hundred.
So the public hearing, you know, posted like, personal permit to buy, sell, and store used cars at.
Okay, so it was clear in the posting.
Eighteen North Main Street.
They've mentioned buying and selling used cars in the, in the posting.
Yeah, but that are, it's wrong, this section they are using.
But does he, does he say section, do they quote the section?
It is.
No, they didn't go to any sections, so.
Then, okay.
I think they hit it there, because, because now the people are aware that it's gonna be buying and selling cars.
Yeah.
You know, so I think they can have their meeting.
Yeah, you want to show it to him.
I, I read it next to you.
Okay, so that's, all right, so it just doesn't, they're not requesting the right, but that's.
It's just they didn't go to the paperwork, I think we can settle down to, just the paperwork is not quite right.
Yeah, they just said, they don't put this, they just, just take it here, put one line.
So he needs to change the paperwork?
Well, yeah, or, otherwise he doesn't have to come for a special permit if he's going for this three point two F one, it doesn't require a special permit.
Is this in the Aquifer District?
I don't know.
Should be commercial.
We haven't gotten anything from the, we haven't gotten anything from the, I, I haven't seen anything from the building's front door.
I don't think there is, I don't think they're gonna.
No, there is nothing.
Does he need the zoning enforcement also?
We should get a zoning interpretation like the other guy got. I hope he will, I mean.
Wait, the current guy is?
No, the other one we're gonna talk about tonight. Didn't, oh, did he get, no, he didn't get a zoning one either, the one Pasquale over on Lancaster Street.
There's so many.
Questions for you.
Okay, yeah, do you have enough to put together a letter?
I'll put together a letter.
All right, let's go on to the next one, more comments on that one, you wanna make sure you get in the letter?
Okay, that's good.
All right, next one. The Karisti.
The lady.
Karisti. That's for property on Lancaster Street, owned by Pasquale's, where I grew up, in the backyard there.
Yeah. Did you ever have trouble with the lot lines?
No. I was playing baseball back there, I was about to.
Why do they need anything if this is already approved?
Well, that's the question that was asked, and it's been sent to town council to find out more clarity, because what they did was, they submitted a letter, but if you look at the petition, it says a variance.
Why do they have to do anything more than the, uh?
Well, hold on, they requested a variance, but.
Yeah.
They didn't say what they want varied, which makes it kinda hard for the Z B A to make a decision, I think. There's nothing that we wanna waive or vary the, we need a variance for a reduced side yard setback on these lots. They don't, because I think they meet the ten yard setback with the new lot lines.
Ten yard?
Ten foot, side yard setback.
Okay.
Would I say that?
I, I, I guess I got the same impression as I read it, it sounds like it's an A N R more than anything else, and if they own all the property.
Well, they already, yes.
It should be fine.
It makes sense, but.
And then furthermore, it looks like the A N R has already signed and approved in eighty or something, or sixty.
Yeah, I think nineteen sixty is what it was.
But no deed was ever recorded?
So write a deed based on that A N R.
Yeah, but they can do that separate, I mean, they don't have to go to use.
That's one of the things that's in the, the petition's desire.
Yeah, I guess that's what I don't, that's the part I don't understand, is why they can't just.
Why can't they write a deed from this plan that is recorded at the registry of deeds? I mean, the story, the information that I've got is that the property owners have not changed until now, so since nineteen sixty, they haven't needed to.
No, it's been registered in, registry of deeds, if you see the seal.
Yeah, B A N R.
Yes.
Yeah, another state.
Yeah, but they, apparently that's not the issue, but the issue is the deed on the property.
Well, that's, that's why I'm not sure that the attorney is correcting his request.
Maybe it just needs billable hours.
I don't really know, but what's happening is it's going, town council is reviewing it.
Oh, great, they just have to get a deed, and now they got two attorneys working on this thing.
September thirty.
So why was, just out of curiosity, why, it said, you know, they're saying that in nineteen sixty, the lots were reconfigured, the plan was recorded with the registry of deeds for just the property line, however, no deeds were ever recorded to complete the reconfiguration of the lots.
Right.
Yeah, it's like they came in and got the A N R, filed the A N R, but didn't change their deeds to the new lot lines or whatever.
So why is, so?
So all they really, I think, all they really need to do now is create deeds according to this plan, record those with the current owners, and then have those current owners sell whatever property, whichever one of these three that's being sold, I think the second one, the middle one. Um, and then whichever one is being sold, then transfer that, but I'm not a lawyer, so that's why we sent it, I mean, that's why I think Christina sent it to town council, it's not, it's not the planning board's.
Why, why is that, why is that considered, why are they asking for variance?
That's why I don't know.
Well, that's, I don't know what you need to vary, because if they move the lot lines to meet the side yard setback.
The variance will correct the lot lines as originally entered, entered in nineteen sixty.
Yeah, but if they have this, but if they have a signed A N R, there's no variance, it's, it's, it's.
And also.
It's already set.
Also, he says the variance will be, will allow the lot to be configured as the, despite an assessor office already reflects.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's already there, there's no variance, because the, as far as the town's concerned, it's already shaped like they want.
Right.
But it was never recorded with the assessors, they have it.
It's on their deed, it is.
They have, assessors usually go by the N A N R that's been approved, so they get, they get an A N R from us, once we sign it, we send a copy to the assessors, and they update the maps.
It just seems kinda strange if they waited fifty years to do it.
Well, they never had to sell, no, they've never sold.
It's probably like they started a title search, and the title search people found it or something like that.
Well, I'm not sure, I don't know what the, the details are, but.
Right, but I mean. Right, but I mean...
It just seems kind of odd.
Vinny, which one is this, is you?
Back up here. Oh, I wasn't actually on the border, yeah, it wasn't quite there, nineteen sixty.
So would you be able to help the ZDA with, when you write this up, as far as, you know, like, what should we be looking for, what should we be asking?
Well, I think Christina's already ahead of you, she's already asked town council for an interpretation, and that's more than what I can offer, what we can offer. Well, because I was gonna, I was gonna draft something, so I emailed, and she said it was forwarded to town council. Well, I think she's going to give you all the information when it comes through.
No discussion by email?
She's going to provide you the full packet of what's gone on, I hope, I expect.
Okay. Wow, we're almost still on schedule, do you have enough to write a letter to her? Actually, that could even just be an email message, because there's nothing, we're kind of saying, we don't think they have to do much.
Right.
You know, either way you want to do it, go and write a real letter, and just, you can send it away.
I'll let you know how it works.
And on the first one, you're going to send something to her, asking the petitioner to verify if it is a three point two to F one or F eighteen?
Well, I think we'll say we don't agree that it's a F one, it needs to be an F eighteen, planning board's opinion, and as such, they have to say why that meets with whatever it is.
Right, and they can do that at the meeting, at the hearing.
Well, still on schedule.
Sound good.
All business. Still more permit for nine and a half mile?
Oh, I knew there was something else I needed to do.
I put all that stuff, I don't know if that was all before, I didn't know what, there may be...
Okay.
Oh, you mean contact, uh, VHB or...
No, 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 I was supposed to draft the wording for the, uh, for the approval, and I forgot all about it, sorry. And when, did we get this one, I don't think so. Okay. We have a February fourth?
I have a February fourth though. A letter. Those things from them I have.
Oh, you have the big packet of stuff, so that's good.
Right, right, right.
Oh, all the old reports too?
That has all the same summary, but this...
Are you looking for something in particular? Man, are you looking for something in particular in that?
No, no, it's just checking on this.
I don't think that's anything.
Well, why don't we let them speak, so he's ready to...
I'm at it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm Kevin Quin with Quin Engineering, here in the half of the Verde Builders, this is Rod DeVerde, we're in for the principles of the Verde Builders. Chris Keenan has been in front of you from my office before, Chris is not available tonight, so I'm filling in for him. So you can probably ask me some questions that I'll have to scratch my head to answer, but ultimately, that's it. We, ninety nine Houssen Street, I know you're aware of this, it's an existing building and site. We've done the site plan design, we submitted the plans for review, VHB has been reviewing it, we've had a very productive relationship with VHB, they've been very helpful. I think my office is pretty good with stormwater, and they're actually, they're pretty good themselves. We've had, why it's been good is they're productive, we, we work with them, they've been able to give us some suggestions, and we've been able to take advantage of them. Our review has gotten down to one point which they're uncomfortable advising on, and they've suggested, we talked to the board, it's a discretionary issue, which I'll, I'll try to articulate, not kill you with engineering galling. You know, engineers just love to stand here and just blather, rather than put you to sleep, we'll try to keep it general. Under the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy, reuse of existing sites is classified as redevelopment. It gives us a little bit of flexibility in how we do it, the, the term they use is compliance to the greatest extent practicable. Do what you can, if the, if the conditions prohibit that, do the best you can, okay? In this site plan, when, when we look at a site like this, it's a, it's a kind of an urbanized site, there's a lot of pavement, we want, we're always attracted to using chambers under the pavement, it's a little more expensive, but I don't have anywhere on this site to put a detention pond or an infiltration base, so chambers allow my client to make use of the area for parking. So we designed chambers here, when we looked at this, we looked at the soils, and what we found is that the water table, we're not far from what, the water table is not far below the pavement surface, it's an existing paved surface. So we don't have the ability to put chambers in here, and, and one of the requirements is that we have a separation of two feet from the bottom of the chamber to the water table, they want the water to infiltrate through two feet of soil before it reaches the water table. So we met the recharge standard on another part of the site, and we designed chambers here that are intended to just store the stormwater, we're not intending to infiltrate. Now, the chambers are open, there's an open bottom on them, some water gets in the ground, but it's not enormous amount. We had some discussion with, with VHB about that, we put in drains to ensure that we capture that water and that it doesn't go down into the ground. In spite of that, these chambers don't have adequate separation to the water table.
So where would the water go, I mean, once the storm is...
It's an outlet over here, what, what happens is the outlet restricts the rate that water leaves the system. So in other words, what we're trying to do is ensure that we're not increasing the rate of runoff from the site. So the chambers fill up, and then the water just drains out at a, as a...
And it goes on over into the wetland corner.
Eventually back to the well, the idea is to recharge that well. But we can't accommodate the separation between the water table. Now, I think VHB, I'm paraphrasing here, but I think they wouldn't have found that to be a problem on this site because it's existing pavement. Their heartburn is that there's new pavement extending out this way. Our belief is that the fact that we have new pavement here doesn't change the fact that it's a redevelopment of an existing site. We have an existing building here, we're not attempting to increase, if we were, if we were building a bigger building, then you could say, well, it's, it's new stuff, that's not the same thing, but with this pavement, this entire parking here is designed to accommodate the existing building.
And the new pavement is only sort of from the way that the wetland recharge back, right?
Yeah, there's a line, it's kind of faint on this plane here that comes right over here, so it's this area here. And the zinger on top of that is that the, the existing pavement is at an elevation. In order to accommodate the new standard, or the, the standard in the new pavement, I'd have to be eighteen inches higher. I think common sense dictates, I can't have a parking lot with a section that's a foot and a half higher than, than the main area. So it's a standard that we think is reasonable to employ in the area of the new pavement. As I say, VHB, I think, I'm paraphrasing, and I think they're uncomfortable, and frankly, if I was reviewing somebody else's work, I'd probably say, yeah, you better talk to a board. It's a discretionary decision that engineers just hate to, to put on their shoulders. But, so I think what we're saying to the board is, I think the, the application of the greatest extent practicable is certainly reasonable to extend the, the entire drainage system on the site, and that's...
And the, the two basins underneath the existing pavement, you're going to tear up pavement, put those in, and then repave it?
Yes, yeah, we're actually, yeah, there is a little bit of the area that's in existing pavement, most of this is in new pavement.
But you, but you have to tear up the existing pavement to complete this construction.
Yeah, yes, to some degree.
Any other, any questions or clarifications?
Yeah, Kevin said that you were talking to DEP?
Yes.
To get an interpretation, what did they come up with?
After talking to DEP, I wanted to take my calculator and just light it on fire, throw it out the window. I, frankly, we had very un, they, they had all kinds of reasons why we shouldn't do things, but they really had difficulty telling us how we should do things. It's, it's, it's hard to paraphrase, but...
So do they agree to the idea of this redevelopment? Because I thought by the definition of the Wetlands Protection Act, that redevelopment is what's already paved. That only applies to what's already paved, you've done a section that's more than what it is. So that redevelopment would apply to everything that's paved on the site, so you get partial credit, but the portion that's new pavement would still have to meet to the full extent.
The question that we brought to DEP wasn't in terms of redevelopment, it was in terms of, see, under the stormwater management, these chambers are considered to be suitable for storage of stormwater. It is the same chamber that you use for recharge, but as long as you're getting the water out of there, they consider that a storage BMP. So the question was, what we were asking was, if we're not, we're not asking for, we're not using these for infiltration, we're using these for storage. So the infiltration standard saying that we need two foot separation really doesn't matter. And they, DEP was not amenable to that, they, they didn't feel, so our position on this is, all right, we'll, we'll, we'll accept that you, you're going to have some, some, some of the water is going to go in there, and we're saying that the, the, um, the greatest extent practical aspect of that is, all right, water's going to go, and we're not going to give you two foot separation, we're going to give you the best we can do, which is six inches.
But you are six inches still above the existing one.
Still above the water table, right, yes.
So we don't think these are going to fill up by themselves?
And actually, the way we've designed it, that can't happen, we were worried about that, and about the possibility of these chambers floating, so...
You said they're open bottom though?
They are open bottom.
Okay, so they wouldn't fill up, they wouldn't float?
Yes, yes. So I think, in, in answering the question of, what, what we're saying is, we didn't get the answer we were looking for from the DEP, because they, they were unable to say, well, what they're saying is some of that water is going to infiltrate, some of that water's going to go anyway. So we're saying, all right, it does go, and what we're, what we're, we're suggesting to the board is that the, the aspect of the greatest extent practical means we can't give you two feet separation.
I understand, and then, um...
Well, you don't have, you can't give us two feet of separation, can you block it off? Is there, instead of using the open bottoms, you could have used like a whole pipe, so that it would be secure and tight? Did you put in, is there a way to put in a permeable liner, like a plastic liner underneath it? Is there a way to put something in there, inject an epoxy so that it seals the bottom now while, instead of going in and doing all this other stuff? Because the point is, is that you need the two foot separation of groundwater because of water quality concerns, and if there's water going into the ground, even the first flush, the first little bit is what carries the most pollutants. So you don't want that going into the ground, which is what would be going into the ground if that system is left as it is. So I wasn't sure if there's some other way to put a barrier in place.
Well, we, we talked about this, we looked at this pretty extensively, and one of the concerns we have is exactly that, is if we did have a, if we sealed these off, the, the concern that VHB had was what if the water table comes up? And that would be my concern, is I'm, I'm concerned about the chambers floating.
Yeah, if they're sealed, and the water couldn't come in.
Yeah, right.
But you've got, I mean, you said you've got an estimated seasonal high water table.
We do, we do, right.
That's pretty conservative.
Oh, yeah, it is, I agree.
The other question about the calculation for these, the sizing of these, was that for all of the drainage off of all of the pavement, or only the drainage off of the new pavement?
No, this is, this is site wide, this is site wide, yeah, that's what we have to capture.
What do you think about the...
Um, I mean, I'm uncomfortable, I think that's what was raised initially with VHB's review of the drainage, and we thought we were going to get something addressed to have everybody happy, and we don't have something from VHB saying everything's all set, and that's usually what we go by, once they bless it, we're...
Like I say, I think, I think, I mean, if, if I so to say, if we were doing the review, we would certainly have, because of the discretionary aspect of what we're, we're talking about, I, I wouldn't want to make that, I would want that to be a board decision.
And we're implementing, actually, our authority is under the stormwater bylaw in town, and what that says, it clearly says it complies with DEP stormwater standards. And either it complies or it doesn't, now, if we can get in some way of locking up the bottom, that would...
But I would submit to you that, respectfully, I would submit that compliance includes the, the, the language in there that says there is room for flexibility. I mean, they, they put language in there that says to the greatest extent practicable, because there are times, and this has certainly got to be one of those times when compliance to the letter of the law is impossible, but the regulation is, has provision in there for flexibility. You know what, you know what, we're not asking you to set the regulation aside, the regulation has planted that flexibility in it.
What was the one that signed by him on? Reasonable?
Uh, you mean, uh, wave strict compliance?
Wave strict compliance.
Right. I don't know.
Just went through this.
I'm not sure where, uh...
I do like the fact that the water is then drained out, if, if that's the case, and then is brought back to the wetland.
And that's a, the, the purple on the left side there, that's the...
That's all the bottom, there's a little area right in there.
That's recreated wetlands because you've taken some away?
It is, that's relocation.
And that feeds, and that, the good place, they're putting it in the right spot, so it's feeding the wetland they created, so that's, that's a good thing. The concern is, is we don't have enough separation of groundwater to infiltrate, so we just should have built it not to infiltrate.
Right. And, and you're thinking that this floating issue may come, and, and these things might come up and crack the pavement?
Well, our, our belief is that whatever water infiltrates would be de minimis, it'd be very good. Particularly in, in response to that, we did put a, a perforated pipe along it to ensure that we move the water along, that we get it out of there, so that it's not standing and perking minimal, I think the estimate that VHB was, um, cubic feet, like two hundred fifty cubic feet of water.
Would infiltrate.
Would infiltrate, yeah, I don't know where that came from, but that was another big thing.
And what's the volume of the, is that like ten percent of the whole thing?
No, I, I couldn't tell you the total quantity, but it's a, it's much, much smaller quantity than ten percent.
Well, I mean...
Did you get anything from VHB on this?
I haven't seen anything since, I asked them if this was a showstopper.
The last letter they put out, they said, this is our final letter.
Okay. In their opinion, was that they thought it should be sealed?
They, they didn't, they, they've said, we're not signing off on it, and, and I'm, I'm stating to you that I think the discretionary aspect, the position that we're taking on that is something they're not comfortable, or they don't feel it's a decision they should make.
It's a weird situation too, because all it is is stormwater, there's no other review.
Do they suggest any alternate?
I'm sorry?
Do they suggest anything to fix the problem?
We've had a lot of discussions with them.
Is there anything feasible?
I mean, the, like I say, we're, we're not comfortable with the idea of putting the chambers, sealing the chambers. I mean, if I could put some soil on top of it to ensure ballast, that would be different, but that's not an option.
I mean, is there, I don't know, is there a shallower but bigger, like, you know, a, a, a different configuration so that you can have more separation, and that would just be, you know, the same volume?
These are pretty much, yeah, these are, these are the squat, squashed chambers of Wicked Gamm.
Okay, and they're not, they're, they were precast kind of thing, that...
They're PEC.
Oh, PEC, okay.
What are you using?
Uh, Kultec two eighty HD, HD is the traffic rated.
Are you familiar?
I think so. And I think the one fifties are shorter, but those are in place, that's the problem. Those are in place, you want to keep those in place.
Oh, in the construction right now?
They're already, they're in the ground. I mean, it could, they could rip them all, not that we want to do that, they could rip them all out, put in pipes, like a system of pipes that have the same storage. We don't, uh, it can be done, but it's an expensive alternative.
The wasteful option.
It's going to be destroyed, everything that's already put in. And VHB did come out, do inspections, trials, installments, before they were backfilled.
Yeah, they were happy with the way it was getting installed.
They told me, go ahead, backfill.
Okay, so now it's in.
He had the plans, I went through the plans with him, they already had the plans dropped off from Quin Engineering.
Did they have the, the stormwater idea? The stormwater idea that said that the separation wasn't quite there?
No, they, this is, all this work has been done at risk, we said that at our last hearing, we've said it all the way through, that it's at risk until we got VHB to approve it.
Right.
And so that's kind of where we stand, is that we don't want to make it more expensive, there's got to be some other alternatives, some ways to look at it.
We don't want to accept the, we don't want to accept it because it's there, you know, just because it's already in place, we don't want to say, all right, good enough. You know, we don't want that to be reasonable.
Can you provide a letter with the justification you're stating, the idea that it's maximum, I'm not sure where you get the maximum, say feasible for that type of thing, but...
We have to, yeah.
And is it, is the...
And then we'll contact VHB to get their, like, is it going to be good enough, is it...
Well, what, and the danger is the wetlands would filter quickly, become a pond rather than be wetlands?
No, no, it's more that you would contaminate the groundwater, not that...
Is there well near there?
There is, I mean, there is a treatment, there's a treatment system here, we, we have a, a stormwater treatment system that removes eighty percent, which is, that's the standard that we have to meet, anyway, in this case...
Before it gets in the basin?
Yes, before it goes into the chambers.
So that's, I mean, that, that's something that, if we can kind of get all that stuff listed, and it'll give us something to fall back on, so...
We can send you a letter. We can send you, we can send you a letter that summarizes what we, what we think of.
And should we say why we think, or what the compromise is to the D E P requirement of eighteen inches?
Well, no, just give us what you've got and then we'll get V H B to review it and see if that, see what he says. Is this a good compromise? Is it something we can work with, is it something?
Do we think he will? I mean, I don't think he'll.
I don't know, I know he's looked at it, he's been happy with the construct, says the construction's going okay. What he does is okay, but since the start, they haven't.
Established that eighteen inch?
Yeah, I guess, since the beginning, it's been that groundwater separation was the problem and getting these things to drain. And I don't know that it's been finalized, I don't think there's a resolution yet, obviously there isn't.
But I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if we're gonna, if that's, I mean, V H B knows what's there, they know what the situation is, they know.
Right, but they're gonna be, they're our advisors to say, well, yeah, you're gonna give them a little, what, what's the downside from their point of view?
So I guess we're gonna say, V H B doesn't approve this to be in performance with anything, but they'll give us advice that this is an okay compromise that we can.
Well, and they'll say why, okay, it's not, it's not in compliance, but it's, if it's two hundred fifty gallons, that it's de minimis, it's not that big a deal.
It's, it's in violation because of the.
Have the owner put in some kind of a liability thing that if the groundwater gets contaminated, which he has to deal with anyway, then he's gonna be liable for cleanup, which he's liable for anyway, but. I don't know whether they can come up with something.
What about like a second, uh, what is it called, the, the, the filter system that gets it down to eighty percent? I mean, if you put a second one that got it to ninety percent, would that, is that possible, or?
Sure, I mean, that's, we, that's a possibility, um, I think, I mean.
Are they expensive? I mean, how, how expensive is that?
Yeah, I mean, one storm scepter was ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, and some of that's the magnitude of them?
Right, yeah. Well, I know how to spend your money.
That's it.
They're steep, and you're looking at seventy thousand dollars worth.
For the project, I just don't know how much is the storm scepter.
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, and, and it would've been nice if they had issues with the groundwater when it came out and did inspections. Don't tell me to backfill it, you know?
Well, it's two different.
It's a whole different issue, yeah, it's a whole different issue.
Cause that, you had a letter from the initial saying there were issues. You chose to move ahead at risk because you were in a rush to get it done.
And I think there are two different people. It was the construction guy and the engineering guy, and the construction guy said, you're doing a great job. And the engineering guy.
So that's, that's probably what, yeah, yeah.
So you got a great job on a, on a, maybe you shouldn't have done it so fast, you know?
So you're all set with what we're looking for?
Yeah, we'll get your letter and note.
Okay, and we'll put you on for next, you think you can get it for next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get it over to V H B.
Because they need some time to review, so as early as you can.
Yep, is, your next meeting is?
Twenty four.
Twenty four.
We'll put them on for the early slot. Is there anything else on that meeting?
Quiet.
Good.
Alright, is there anything else I can? Want to?
Uh, Enstratas, I didn't read it, but everything's all set for the.
Yeah, what, what happened was, um, there was, apparently there was an incident of contamination on the site prior to my client's ownership of it.
Yep, right, you brought that up.
Yeah, nineteen eighty or so, yeah, right. Um, this came as a surprise to us and to my client who bought the land. I would've thought, um, owner has the obligation to disclose. Well, as it turns out, if the site has been remediated completely, there, there's no obligation. And that's even from his attorney. So I, I, I'm, I'm taking it outside.
You're just getting bad advice all over the place.
This thought is such a good idea.
Yeah, right.
When I first thought of this, yeah. So what we, we asked Enstrat, go back through the file, go everywhere, search around, and summarize to us what's going on here. So they came back and said, yeah, the site was remediated, the, the letter there basically says that, um, the site, that there was a remediation took place and it's considered, uh, done contaminating.
Right. Right, that's all?
That's good, that's, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna try to get it through.
Maybe Chris will be here next time.
Oh, alright, either of them, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you my homework.
I'm not gonna read it?
Sure, take it home.
That's exciting.
Okay, sign bylaw, where do we get unsigned bylaw?
Do we have the draft ready?
No, I don't give a very long.
We just did it last week.
I never saw your email. Oh my gosh.
What, what'd you guys do?
We're arguing.
Okay, take it outside.
Just to cut soon. Um, so, the, um, there's a couple things. The one down below, it says W B was just changing, um, the wording of the electronic sign. See, the full digital image may change no more than every ten seconds. And then the rest of it was left the same. I didn't do that on your email, but that was, that was one of the things we, um, we needed to change.
Then it changed?
That needed to change, and this part was not altered at all, but that first sentence.
So it, it changed to ten seconds?
It changed to ten seconds.
From a minute to ten seconds.
No more than every ten seconds.
Okay.
Right, sure. I, I would like to do what the, what they asked us to do.
Well, that's, yeah, we wanna talk about when we do the public hearing notice.
Okay.
I can change it, I have it for my computer. Um, the other thing that I was wondering, and I didn't see Vinnie's, I had forwarded onto Vinnie. I didn't see his comments.
Spam thing?
Oh, could be my spam. Um, the business centers, because when I was looking it over, I thought, why not try to just simplify the wording of it and simplify the, um, uh, I, I didn't, I didn't change the chart or anything because I didn't know how people would feel about it. Um, so you can see the markup that I had kinda taken off of there. And I should've done a different color, um, for the rest of the changes. But, um, I was just trying to simplify the way that that was stated, and I don't know if simplifying it was taking off too much. And then I also increased the overall, um, size of a business, this is only for business center, of the overall business center sign, and the only reason why my thinking in that was, um.
Height of the size?
The, um, I changed the, um, I changed both, the height of the building to twenty five feet. And I changed the overall size to one hundred square feet, and I'll tell you the reason why I was thinking that way was because I had, um, this with me, and I know this is rather large, and so it was not as big as this. But it was a little bit, um, cause this is thirty feet tall by fourteen feet wide, and I really didn't think that.
You should jump right in with that.
Chesa Plaza one was too big. Um, but if people are feeling like, then business centers need to be larger, then maybe we can scale it down, make it a little bit larger, but make it so it's smaller than that, because that's too big. So, I mean, you certainly can say, oh, no, I, I don't agree with that, I was just trying to do like a compromise in between. Because this is only be like, I was thinking maybe it would be like for the Walmart sign, like what's a full business center? Where do we have in West Boylston that this would even be applicable to?
That hasn't already built their sign?
Correct.
You set the precedence.
Right, that hasn't already built their sign, and trying to make it so it would be smaller than that. And then also looking at, um, the table, and I didn't look up the other table, but this is just for a regular sign, this isn't for a safety sign. But traveling at, um, thirty five miles per hour, um, uh, in a simple two lane road, um, a sign size being ninety eight square feet is what's recommended, um, for our safety. And so just trying to increase the overall size for safety and, um, how the, the traveling. So I was just trying to keep that all in mind, you may all disagree and want it to change it. I know I probably changed it a little bit more than what Chris Lund was proposing.
But these are addressing Chris Lund's concerns?
It was, but I would have to go back and change it on the, I didn't go back and change it on the, um, chart because I didn't know how people would feel about my thinking of that. Yeah. And you, and Vinnie might have comments about that. And then, um, I, the other part down below, like in the middle, I had actually looked up, um, the town of Grafton and the way that they have some of the wording for the electronic signs, because I actually thought that some of what they have, um, if, if we wanted to make any changes to the rest of that, some of what they have is kinda.
Makes sense.
Nice, and it makes sense, like, I like, I like the, right, I like that too, are not permitted within any residential district or the village mixed district use if we.
Go that way.
Right, if we go that way. Um, so there were a couple things in there, maybe not everything, but there were a couple things in there, I thought, well, that might make sense that we might wanna add to it, and, um, if we wanted to talk about the electronic sign a little bit more. So that was where my thinking was with the signs.
I like it, I'm just reading the, the Grafton stuff. Vinnie, she was saying you might have comments on it too.
Yeah, I didn't, and I'm sorry, you must've gone to my spam.
Okay, yes, yes. Like, I wasn't sure what, you said something about simplif- or simplifying?
I was trying to simplify it a little bit.
So that first paragraph is what it was simplifying, which, that's okay, the idea of simplifying is great. This, the second portion there, I think a bunch of those we already have in our.
Well, I, you, you, it was worded a little bit differently, actually.
So that's what I'm, I was kinda going through and trying to find how we worded it and seeing.
Yeah, so the, um, the whole brightness thing is very specific that we had in ours. Um, with theirs was, um, a little bit different.
Number five there.
Yeah.
Directly solar.
Yeah.
Just say at a sufficiently low level of intensity?
Yeah.
And brightness that it shall not adversely affect the neighboring premises nor the safe vision of operator?
Yes.
Of vehicles. And we, I remember we were talking about brightness and lumens and candle powers and things like that.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that was taken from.
From another standard, or maybe even a sign catalog. Like, I, I think we found somebody who sells signs and recommended them.
I think so, but it was some, yeah, some organization.
Yeah, so.
The same idea, the idea is the same.
Yeah, so the idea is the same, so I guess in part of my thinking too is I have heard some people in town say that they're not sure how much sign bylaws are actually enforced. And so if, if some, would this, which makes it easier to enforce?
If they're similar, right.
If they're a little bit similar, would there be a building inspector that would use some of that wording? I don't know, I don't know. So that was why I, I was thinking of some of the, looking at language.
I like the, I mean, the idea of it being a, like a friendlier tone. The trouble is, is when he goes out there and says, well, that's not a nice sign, or that, that sign is too bright. Well, okay, it's too bright for you, but it's not too bright for me, that's why having a number gives you a standard to say, okay, well, here's the measurement, there it is, that's what, that's what we discussed back when we were originally.
Oh, no, I, I know, I understand why it's in there, but.
Of low brightness that it shall not adversely affect the neighboring premises? Is that not a?
How do you interpret it?
Inter, or an enforceable statement?
We have had some neighbors who get upset about tiny little things and other neighbors who don't say a word about anything. So, yes, usually, that's why it's a standard, you don't want it based on, cause if they build it and it's easy neighbors there, and then a tougher one moves in.
And then the other, so then in number six, um, it says something about the changeable electronic variable message shall be equipped with a light detector or photo cell, scheduled dimming timer, or other automatic control by which the sign's brightness can be dimmed when the ambient light conditions darken, in addition to any other enforcement authority, um, specified in this bylaw.
Our sign needs that in town.
It goes along with that.
It does?
Does it?
It's very bright.
It's very bright, I don't know, but it would be nice if we said, alright, maybe, if we were going to have more electronic signs, it would be nice to say, yes, because it has to dim.
That's good, I like that. I think there were two, I thought there was a daytime s- intensity and a nighttime intensity, but. But yes, I mean, that's, that's a very good idea, that.
Yeah, it's, uh, section E three, shall not exceed three fifty nits from sunrise, sunset to sunrise and six thousand from sunrise to sunset.
Just going to. And I have no idea what those numbers are.
I don't know what those numbers are either.
There's a brightness section in there.
Yeah, yeah, but I, if you said, what's this light here?
This is clearly a, something really.
Inspector could measure that with a, you know, one old electric, you know, sal.
Mikk meter, something like that. A mikk meter. Dim meter.
And so, those are some, well, we were making changes, I thought those were some, some things to consider.
And then while we were doing that, when it comes to the signs, the sign stuff that we've talked about over the years, and that's what I didn't bring here either, um, was possibly changing our sign bylaw. Currently it says, all signs have to be set back from the property line ten feet. That one is regularly disregarded. I don't know of too many signs that are set ten feet from the property line. But there is a requirement in the bylaw that requires it to be on the property. So even though that Chesa Plaza sign got a permit, it didn't get a variance to go against that one. So it's still in violation of the zoning, but.
But government firms jumped all over that to be able to permit their sign.
Well, they're, but they're only, they're staying eight feet away from the property line, so that's not so bad.
But when we brought up, they should only need one sign on the property, and they said, that's not on the property. Our sign's on the property, but theirs isn't.
Oh, right.
You know?
So what I was, and I'm okay, uh, we put it in ten feet, ten feet from the property line. So I was thinking more on the side yards, so that it's not right on the next door neighbor's property. Um, so I just wanted to have a little discussion of what people thought about changing the bylaw to say, um, to either say it has to be on the town, on the parcel, or on the parcel, but not within five feet of the butters property, something like that, so that there's.
Do you wanna allow, in agreement, just in case in a butter, they wanna have a common sign?
That's you.
Allow that to happen?
Well, we're allowed to waive it, strict compliance no matter what, so that.
Would you, would you approve one that came forward?
Yeah, if they're working together.
That's what I mean, I mean, if they're.
One sign instead of two big ones, that sounds good to me, but they won't.
And I mean, as far as they go, it'd probably be an expense thing and everything like that to.
Yeah, and that, but that's something we could do. But the idea, what I wanted to discuss, to see what people thought, was ten foot.
Yeah, I would, I would say.
Is there a problem that allowing it within that ten foot there, zone?
The only thing is, I think a lot of the signs, like the shell signs, whether it's driveways, I think they end up right on the edge of the property, and I don't think you're gonna be able to do that sometimes. Like, I think the shell sign and the B P sign are both right on, and the government firm sign are right on the edge of the property because they're outside of the driveway, which is close to, less than ten feet from the edge of the property.
Yep.
You know? So I don't know.
So just keep it on the property, so have no setbacks inside.
I mean, we could put a, unless otherwise.
What about no setbacks within the business or industrial?
I like that, no, what do you mean no setbacks?
Hmm, the sign has to be on the property, the ten foot setback is only when you're, like, abutting or in a residential district.
I think we should not let them be in a, I think the residential one is like a.
If a business abuts a residential.
A buts, I think you should do that definitely.
And you keep it, yeah.
You would honor the residential setbacks, how's that?
I don't know how to word it, but I get the idea, does that sound good?
So i- if we, if we consider removing the setbacks, at least in some situations, um, that would impact, um, sort of visual view of a right of way or impact safety potentially, in a, in any way of traveling down a road.
Well, we have a bylaw, in the bylaw.
We've got another one that, yeah.
I think safeties are always priority on them.
Right, but there is a bylaw that's in there, it's separate from the site triangle.
Yeah.
If you have a road or driveway coming out, you can't put a sign in within the site.
Okay, so that's covered.
That one we don't wanna.
We could add that comment to the setbacks are removed, but compliance with whatever that, but I, I. We could add that comment to the setbacks are removed, but compliance with whatever that by law is. It's still requiring.
Yeah, that's good.
And kinda, I'm, I'm n- uh nervous about actually mentioning, like cross linking two bylaws, cause as you change one, you might have to change the other.
Well, we'll see when, we're gonna put the wording together. This is all, right now we're just getting ideas. The next meeting we'll
Can we post?
Cheryl will have it all drafted.
Okay. Can, can we post our um uh our, our Can we post that we're gonna have our public hearing? Or do we have to wait for a draft?
I don't know how comfortable with yours. If we post something, we could post it, cause we're gonna meet in two weeks. So we can post that we're gonna make changes, but then we'll go into the wording um of the, of the, of the public hearing notice. But we can hold a public hearing in a month from now and still talk about the specific changes at our meeting. Now, cause we have to show the changes when it's posted, when it's advertised.
All right.
So if someone wants to see what we're gonna talk about, this is what it is.
I have my note, my notice should, notice should state that the sign bylaw should say that changes will include duration, but also other items with sign size and remove contradictions. We, is it all right to list a public hearing notice that is a little bit ambiguous?
Yes. Well, it's not ambiguous. It says just that. But when someone says, oh, what are you proposing? You have to give them something. So that's why we have to have something, yeah.
You have to
We can have that wording, but we need to have what we're proposing.
Whatever the
But town meeting's in May. It's still February.
I'm gonna hurry.
I know, cause you've got that pressure. You're gonna be running for reelection.
Exactly. I need these things done. Sixty-five days to have a hearing, twenty-one days before town meeting. So beginning of February, latest requirements for hearing. That's my notes.
Say that again? Beginning of February is the latest for what?
Requirement for hearing.
What does that mean?
Won't you? That's what I wrote down.
We have same days from the time they refer.
When was that?
That's what my next question was to you. I don't know.
I don't know when they're, I, I mean, we got the note at our last meeting.
So then that's
We wanna base it on the meetings.
So we have time. I don't think they're really, as long as we get it done for the May town meeting, they don't care whether we meet tomorrow or in two months. So I don't wanna rush into this with not having the wording and then have it thrown out on a technical
Kevin's running for election too. He might be
Yeah, okay.
Is he, actually, is he running, his seat's up. Is he running?
Cool. Let's stick to the sign bylaw.
Okay. Alright, so next, so we'll aim for draft in March.
So that's, so the ten foot setback is Oh, so
Scheduling wise, we'll aim for having the draft, do we can have a draft? Good enough to hand out next week? Next meeting?
I don't know, you haven't written up?
If we have agreements?
I don't write the no. Go ahead.
If we have, if we agree on how we want it to be.
Right, well, that's what we, that's what we're talking about tonight. If we know what we all agree to.
Yeah, if we know what
If we want all these cockamamie ideas in here, it's gonna take a little while, but
I thought you changed one line. I'm just kidding.
No, we need to, that's what we need to talk about now.
But I'm thinking that if we get a draft together that's ninety percent there, that's what we can hand out.
Yes.
You know? And then we can, we can fine tune it during the time between that and the meeting, present the changes or whatever. So if we get a ninety percent draft next meeting, we can post and start doing it for the meeting after that. Good.
Good.
Sound good?
Mm-hmm. So can we talk to get towards that ninety, ninety percent?
Yeah, talk amongst yourselves. Go ahead. Have fun.
What do you want to talk?
Uh, one thing that I did wanna bring up again was the high school sign.
Oh, but that's an enforcement thing.
That's, yeah. Why do you wanna, do you wanna write our bylaw around the high school sign then?
I don't necessarily wanna write it around that sign, but it actually, um
Is it effective?
It is effective. It looks nice. It's, it's not in poor taste. The one on the front
It's a sign very similar to ours, but on the front of the high school.
No, it g- it changes every five seconds.
I know.
It does, and it has like a little snowflake that comes down. It's actually very, it's very attractive.
Yeah, no more than Yeah, but it should, it shouldn't be, right?
It shouldn't be attractive, no.
No.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be.
Made it attractive.
Does it change color?
Yeah, but everyone, somebody will put another image in, attractive images. You want that?
Do what?
The businesses, they can put in attractive images instead of snowflakes. We don't want any of those things.
Oh, right. No, but it's, I think we should, what are you getting at? That we should lean that way as opposed to
Well, I'm not saying that we should necessarily lean that way, but it, that would there be um
Will you strict compliance?
It
No.
I don't know, any, yeah, anytime.
It can be granted. The trouble is if you do it for the town, the way the law, I'm pretty sure the way the law states is that if the town's doing one thing but requires everyone else to do something else, it won't stand up in court.
Right.
So that's why if we don't do what we're saying, why should we be requiring everybody else to do it?
Oh, no, I understand that thinking. Um
That's a nice sign. Do we want a lot of them around as a thing?
No, no.
We, you, we could, we could be clever and give them like a property size. If your sign is the only moving whatever digital copy sign on a property the size of, and you put in exactly the size of the school's property or larger, then
Spot zoning, you can't do that. Spot zoning, you can't do that.
Well, yeah, but could you
No, it's just, you're just putting a spot, a area size.
But could you, but could you do it so that you would add, so that you would add um, that you couldn't have that you can't have it, but you couldn't have it within um a quarter mile, a quarter mile of another.
Yeah, like a hundred feet of another, yeah. That would be clever.
So then
So then it's the first one
It's all
First come, first served.
Yeah.
Exactly, first come, first served. It, it would only allow at the, what, what would you think? It would only allow for maybe two signs on Route twelve?
No, I suppose more than a half mile long.
At the most
I don't know.
No, but there's already a sign at the satellites.
I wouldn't wanna propose that one now.
Yeah, so there's one.
There's one at the high school.
Quarter mile later, you have another one.
Or I don't know, maybe it longer than a quarter mile.
Oh, I think a quarter, a quarter mile is probably a sight distance where you wouldn't, you'd be like, oh wow, that's annoying. And you're driving along and, oh look, you know, I mean, far enough away that you maybe you can't see, you can't see two at the same time, I guess, or something.
Right, so you don't see two at the same time. I'm not proposing Las Vegas.
I think we're still
Just Route nine.
I don't want Route nine either. I don't know. I'm just trying to
I wouldn't go with, I wouldn't go on this
With a compromise for
I don't, I mean, that's
I mean, I, I think that we should, we could go that way and make it sort of some complicated scheme so that they're not everywhere, you know? I, I, I enjoy that. That sounds like a great thing. But I don't know if we can do it and make it fair. Like, like what if, you know, like, I don't know, what if you're next door to uh North End Motor Sign and they put up their sign, even though they're not in town, but you, you've seen uh Hadley sign
O'Conner's, it's in O'Conner's.
Or whatever, there's somebody in town.
Yeah.
And they put up their sign and then you're like, oh, that, they're bringing in a lot of business doing that, and I've got a similar business less than a quarter mile away, and now I can't put up a sign.
Nope, can't.
I know, that's where, I don't know if that's fair to do.
Is that even legal?
What? I don't know. I don't know. I mean, that's I, I, certainly, I guess it's legal to write the document. I don't know if you can
Could we just make more business for the ZVA? Everybody become looking for a special program?
But all you can do is go and build the sign.
It's a variance, but yeah.
I mean, right now, we don't have anything in the bylaw around electronic that says, you know, th- that restricts the number of electronic signs in town. So right now theoretically, every, everybody on Route twelve could have one. So what we're ta- what we're talking about proposing is reducing that down from what it currently is. Do we think that the business community, do we think that the town would be in favor of some, of a, of a restriction like that?
I think the
And that's why I know it's, it's going to be
No, town, yes. People in town.
Yeah, but it's going to be a discrimination, right? You are allowing one business, not allowing the ne- next business. How, is it fair? No.
That's what I mean. That's what I don't, I mean, because
So if you have a business
Right, I think that's a good point.
Come on farms is gonna be putting one up.
Everyone should have one.
That, that means that all the businesses currently across the streets.
That be eaten or eaten or eaten.
So it, you know, if they wish, they should
If we do the score amount thing, I mean, we could not do that too, you know, we're just talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think so. That would fly. That's not fair, no.
Uh
Would the property size be more appropriate? Because then you could say, well, move to a bigger place.
No, what if, what, yeah, what if if this guy has a small business, one, one of, like the Art of Place, Spare Place, he needs a trade.
No, it seems to me to be going in the opposite direction and, and, and not, not that this isn't, not that this is, not that we can't do this. But it seems to be going in the opposite direction as the feedback we were getting from the board of selectmen.
Oh, actually, that's very true, because they want the time restriction.
Board of selectmen is more, more restrictions. We're talking about adding additions.
So we're saying, alright, you can change it as often as you like, but you can only have one at a time.
Well, I mean, they, I, the, the board of selectmen say, might say, what is that? No portion of the image? I mean, they might say, yeah, we don't have to do that either.
I think Kevin's gonna stick right along with the timing. I want it zero. Okay, what else is there? I think that's how, that, that's where he's at right now.
Yeah.
Well, okay. Um, if we could put like a narrative or something like that together to discuss these thoughts, you know, just to put that in, that you wanna to collect it all up and that'll be in the draft as a discussion or something like that.
I mean, that's, I think that's, that's a good idea. I mean, another option is, um, I'm, I'm not suggesting this is ideal, I'm just suggesting it's an option. Is to sort of go the path of least resistance, reduce or propose reducing the, you know, the time with which you can change your electronic sign, make some of the other
Yeah, sort of
More typographical clarity type issues and leave the other stuff to one side for, for another day. Like, I'm not recommending that, I'm just saying that's, that's
Well, that's what we should do. That is, that is what we should do to get this done and over with.
Yeah, but the, the idea is, you know, we want to change our, wherever the sign bylaw is, has an issue.
Right.
Yeah.
You want to fix it. That's, that's the reason the last time, you know, we did the
Well, I think if we stick to only where it currently has an issue, and we fix the current issues, I think that's
I understand, but
A safe way to go.
But he said we will fix all the sign bylaw issues. I don't think you can do that.
No, well, we don't know all of them. I mean, we've heard the ones about the s- the side yards, the timing for changing an electronic sign, and then the stuff from
The contradictory sign sizes and things like that.
That's as much as I was thinking we were gonna go in with.
Yeah, that should be fine.
I mean, there, there are some good things in here that we can add in as well.
Yeah.
That we can
I would like to, I would like to do that only in business, you know, only in the right zones.
Yeah, that person, yeah.
They can only have one of like the signs when you're
Oh, yes.
In the right zone, zoning.
Is that already in there?
Uh, I don't want all of being in there. But I don't want, maybe.
Which part of that?
Just that you can't have a, like a, this sign bylaw doesn't apply or doesn't let you have a sign like in your residence if you set up a little own business. You can't have a closed sign.
Oh, this is, this is actually Oh, yeah, they could, they can have a sign. They can have a sign.
A small sign. I think it's like the single kind of sign, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
They can have one single sign. That's the home, home office.
Right, define the place, but you can't, you, you start to not let them have
No, they do need to have a sign, right? If you don't, but last week, you know, that's
Yeah, the second table talks about signs that are available in any district
Yep.
As opposed to just business, industrial, or commercial, which are these.
Home activation sign, there we go.
It's, it's much more limited.
And no electronic signs, does it say that?
Well, it, it doesn't specify sort of, well, it says a standing sign. It, it doesn't say it can't be an electronic sign. Um
Oh, we do have illuminated signs are not allowed in single residence or general residence districts under illumination.
There we go. I think we could add to that to be electronic, so Well, not as
Yeah, it's kinda, yeah.
That's another
Well, that's illuminating.
Illuminated signs, that's illuminated, which you could take as electronic, you could make it
Well, we kind of use the term, I think, digital instead of electronic in the bylaw.
Changeable copy, I thought we were talking about.
Yeah, it's under changeable copy section. But when we're talking about electronic, the bylaw calls them digital display signs.
Oh, well, then maybe we could add that exact same line to the digital display sign thing. Digital display signs are not allowed in single residence homes.
Yeah, there's way too many, um, there's way too many places to look.
It is.
It's very confusing.
That's, that's to allow a lot of different interpretations and complicated ZVA filings.
Oh my gosh.
The reason that sign bylaw is so complicated is to allow for funny interpretations to go before the ZVA.
You gotta go to the chart, you gotta go to the wording, look on that page, that page.
I don't think now is the time to change that.
What do you, what do you consider, how many businesses are considered, it's considered a business center? How many businesses is the minimum?
Is there any or more?
Any or more? But there's no max, correct?
Correct.
So did, so in what Cheryl was saying about the, you know, the business center, the sign stuff, is it did the ZVA sort of like set precedence now for a business center by allowing the one that's over there where the software school is, that sign, is that now the poster child?
I mean, that was, I mean, that was a variance. So that's just
That was a special permit.
What was?
The sign that went over there to the, um, where, you know, where the software school is that
Oh, okay. But still, that's sort of the one situation.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm asking you, is that
It was a variance.
Is that now
I don't think it was a variance. I thought it was, I thought it was a special permit.
Well, if it's a, if it's a special permit, then he's in violation of the zoning. Because I'm pretty sure
But the, the, the bottom line is, is, has that been set as a precedence now? Kind of where's, you know, any business center can say, well, they have that sign, so now
They could, they could argue that, but there's no, there's no legal weight behind that argument. There, there, there's nothing compelling you to know you have to do the same thing in other places in town. No. I mean, that's, that's
Why do we think
That's the idea behind a special permit and a variance.
What you guys decide, when you decide to hold it's the public hearing for the sign, will there be something available to people before the meeting so that they can read?
Make thirty foot sign. No, that's what I'm Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Be some sort of hokey draft.
I don't know what you, how many people you expect, but I would make a suggestion that if you do have that public hearing, then you try to get your meeting up in the selectmen's room so that it's a bigger room, probably have more people.
No, it is. There won't be getting any, not too many people, I guess.
Oh, is it televised? Well, it has to be live.
I guarantee you.
So they don't do the, uh
Well, ours are televised now.
I think ours are televised. I just, since we are at the same time as the selectmen, they, they get live coverage. Not because they're a better meeting, just because.
There's only two people that show up.
We only have one?
Me and the telephone, me and the
Well, your is bigger than that.
Me and the newspaper put stuff down here.
Alright, we settled on, on, you think you can bang away on a draft for a little, that we could have for next week? Bang away.
I can do, it's gonna be a lot of work, but I think I can do it.
Well, when I, we, I, I like Chris's idea that we don't reinvent the thing. We just, we just do
Keep it, keep it to a minimum.
Well, keep it to the necessary. It doesn't have to necessarily be minimum. We'll do all the things we wanna change to clarify, address all the things that Chrisland brought up.
Sure.
And you can sneak whatever you want in.
Oh, yeah, I'll just sneak a couple of things in there. You won't know.
Drafting it.
You'll never know.
Vinnie always does that. I never read his stuff. I just, alright. Okay, so I can put away my notes.
Does the school, does the school, look at that? Snowflakes on the sign?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's a transition.
Is it climate weather and the school's closed, it'll show us turn colors?
It's like a very, it's very slow, the snowflake coming down. It's lovely.
Oh, they may have a different
See
Not snowflakes, no, they may have
This one.
You know, like the prue
Different seasons on the front side.
And they got the flashing blue or the flashing red or the solid blue. Is that a changeable copy sign?
Which, which one?
On the top of the credentials.
The prue, tell you the weather.
And it, well, it, but it just tells it by the, the blue or the red, steady flashing.
It's a code, no.
I don't think so.
But could you have something like that in town and, or would they have to get a sign permit? Would that change too often?
Special permit for the ZVA.
I mean, it's not advertising.
No, if you go to the
It's more informational. Alright, it's like a stoplight.
If you go to the Waugh City Plaza, that bridge
Yep.
It's arguably a safety thing.
That changes.
Do we want, do we want a table with discussion on the signs to get these guys home before it gets too late?
That's true.
Yeah.
Are we still on schedule? No, we're eight fifteen.
No, we're not.
We're ten minutes off the schedule, we're doing really well.
Right.
Sign bylaw draft.
But I know they're here for something that's not on the agenda, so. I know, I know, it's like.
Do we get?
I just realized why they were here, and I could've told them an hour ago that they didn't have to stay.
What?
Oh, alright.
Okay.
Alright, come on down. Apparently, we're taking you under citizen comments. Citizen comments at eight fifteen.
We're changing it out.
Actually, Paul, before us in formal, he'll really impressed that you guys volunteered to do this stuff.
Well, there's a seat open.
And you, and you, and you have two meetings a month?
Sometimes.
At least.
Not in the summer.
Well, actually, the reason why we came, even though we weren't specifically on the agenda.
Yep.
Make sure I get through it in the end in front of you there, is where it said, under the first section, where it says, new business review of correspondence emails received. And I sent you guys an email, so I figure I wanted to make sure, and, and, and plus, I mean, the.
But you're old business, I'm sorry, it's just that it's been.
We are old business. We're really, oh, business. Uh, no, we just wanted to make sure that, that the list that we gave you.
I didn't see it.
If you had any questions.
No, he sent it by email.
No, actually, it was, I took that, I took the list that you submitted and forwarded to V H B, who are the guys who have been out on the site, our engineer.
Exactly.
Yes.
And I asked them to compile a list of everything that needs to get done out on the site, what you guys want, what the planning board wants, or V H B wants.
Okay.
And then compare that to what, um, Heritage Design has said, yes, yes, we can do this, yeah, we'll get to that in the spring, we'll get to that in the spring. And then where there are differences, that's when we're gonna make a list, the plan of the board will make a list, and forward that to Heritage and say, okay, these are the ones, you said you're gonna do this, these are questionable, we'd like to talk to you, can you come into a meeting?
The question, why would you send it to Heritage, why would we send it to the developer, who's gonna be responsible for, who has Heritage, Heritage, some, works with them.
Heritage? Oh, I thought it was the same.
Heritage is, Heritage is his engineer.
No, no, Heritage. It's his engineer, but it doesn't own it, Keystone is the one.
Yeah, so I mean, it's going to Keystone, I was.
Well, and Keystone, and I think Keystone gets copied and everything, you send it to Heritage.
Yeah, that, you're right.
Well, I would send it to Mike Stady, that's like, that's who I would send it to, I, I was thinking he was Heritage, but that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, the intention was there.
It works.
Yeah.
In fact, most of the stuff that I've seen, you sent to Stady and, and, uh, Heritage too, I forget the guy's name, Heritage.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I just usually wanna get an email with attachment or copies, when I reply to it, I'll reply to all, so everybody gets the whole story.
Right, okay.
Whether it's one or not.
And our comment sort of started when we, when we read, uh, one of the, the things from, from, from V H B back to Heritage, or, or, or Keystone, or Stady that said, the following items don't necessarily have to be done, or whatever the wording was, but we suggest, so like, why would you just suggest? I mean, there's things that, that, that we feel should be done, should be done, in, in, in the site, and it's like, you know, why let them off the hook? Because, you know, some of our questions.
What did V H B say?
Are about, well, they, they, they said, and I can find, I can find.
Were there two lists, did V H B's listen to your list?
Well, well, that list was broken down into sections.
Yeah.
And one section was, the following items are optional to be done, or something, you know, wording to that effect, you know? And we didn't think it should have an option.
Yeah, well, I think some of them, the ones that I remember were like the, a channel, instead of being a formally defined, like, really defined channel as opposed to a flatter, smoother channel, they said as long as the drainage is working and everything's flowing away, it's okay. If they got information from the property owner saying, yeah, it's shaped like that, but it's not working, that's, that's what we're trying to do this step here, to say, okay, these are not working, they were built correctly and they're still not working, they need to be fixed, or these were not built according to the plan, but they're working fine, so you're all set.
And it's like the swale, and when they taught, one of them was a swale that, that, that they, that V H B suggested they have fabric and, and crushed stone put in or whatever, and it's like, well, because it was, what, what's the word, scouring, it had to scour. Well, yes, no question, that over the, over the, the few years that we've had, that it's sort of washed, it's sort of washing out, because there's, there is no stoner.
Right.
And we think, like, you know, why wouldn't you just say, you know, make them like the rest of the swales that you did, that had the stoner. Now, especially if you've, you've got one here that, that you can see has been washed away, so.
And if it's scouring, then yeah, yes, and I think that's where V H B was.
V H B picked that as a.
Well, but, but that was under the, that was part of the list that they said is optional, you said, why would that be optional, you know?
Right.
And they didn't.
Well, and they may not have been out there when the things were scoured out, or it's, that's why I wanna pull everything together, so we're not doing like four different things and going back to Stady and saying, okay, we want this, this, and this, and then a week later, or two weeks later, when we meet again, add four more things. Get it all, this is what we want done, when it's all done, call V H B, they'll go out there, check to make sure it's all done, then they send a letter to us, it's all done, we'll notify them, and they'll agree that it's all done, I hope, and then we really bond.
And that's, and we, and that's exactly what we're looking for, looking for, to ensure that all of the items.
Yeah, that you pick up, you, when you take ownership, it's, it's a good thing.
Get it done, and I said, like, like, we have some driveways in some sections of the road that, that are, that were never done right to begin with.
You're saying collapsing.
And, and Stady's response is like, you know, to us, has been, well, it's ten years, it's made, so, yeah, same.
A lot of them saying is routine stuff that's happened, worn out over ten, eleven years, and it is no way.
You know, I mean, if I, if you paid to have a driveway put in a year ago, you wouldn't expect it to be falling apart in about ten years.
Well, I mean, I think you can point to the, I, I don't know if this is what they'll do, but you can point to, yeah, we have sixty other driveways over the last ten years that are fine, and you have this one that isn't doing so, what do we do wrong here?
What, what I'm afraid of is, and I live on the biggest catchment retention detention stormwater, I'm not sure what they call these things, but it's the biggest one there. And I moved in in March of two thousand and six, and five days later, a big Euclid earthmoving truck, that thing that drops its bottom and digs it up, that's expensive, with the big bulldozer pushing it and all the sun stuff, that's what we don't wanna get stuck paying for if it needed to be done. He did that over, it works fine, the one behind my house works fine, but all the four bays have never been cleaned, never. And the bottom line is it cost us too much money out of our pockets to do it, for some reason they think that we're all rich, and we just go ahead.
And, and it's the clean and excavate.
Yeah.
You get, the silk comes into the, uh, uh, catch basins, and then it runs with the pipes to the detention pond, to the four bays, and the four bays collect it, and then just the water runs on them to the.
It'll work with us.
Oh, I understand that, but that stuff isn't, isn't.
And, and, and it seems like you're also concerned that we don't let the.
Thank you.
Money go away before we're done.
That's it.
Exactly.
Chip to do.
I think that's why they keep coming by.
It is, it is.
Great.
And that's, and we just, and we just wanna make sure that, 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 that.
Right.
That we hold to the, you know, to what should be done, yeah.
Right, or, or, use that money that was intended to.
Well, it's very interesting, there's a stake that we put in the four bays to determine what point the silk comes up to.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Well, guess what? There's one four bay right at the beginning, right at that bridge there, and there's suddenly a stake there. I've been there ten years, there's never been a stake, and there's a stake there, and none of the others have them, so that's the type of thing, shouldn't be a stake, should be still raw, it's not gonna rot out.
You can, you can stake that you can pull up whenever.
That's right, so I, we just wanna make sure that we're covered.
Right.
It's all, we take, oh, we did a good job with that, too, I think, so, uh.
And one of, one of my questions too was this, this, uh, operation and maintenance, uh, plant that we have, right?
Yes, he's gonna get Heritage to put that on their letterhead.
On their letterhead.
Get it official.
They've never done it.
Okay, right. Well, no, he, he's gonna get him to do it anyway.
Right, that's part of the.
That's gonna be part of the.
But they've never done an operation, a maintenance plan.
Well, that's, they are, they did that originally, it's just that it's been sent electronically, they got, it came through electronically to me, because it was a draft sent to me, and that's where it all started.
We should make it associated somewhere with the drawing.
Wouldn't somebody be required to, while the construction is going on, where you're gonna get most of the silk, should have been done in maintenance.
Two thousand and.
This one was June seventh, two thousand and eleven.
It's, it's separate, though, this is the maintenance after the place has functioned.
I was thinking of that, yeah.
I mean, it's, the construction side is different.
Well, they're saying. Yeah, but Keystone's saying that the maintenance was done, no means we've cut the, the, the growth in there occasionally, that's it, and there's, there's more to it than, yeah, and we do it twice a year, make a.
The O N M, isn't there a construction version of the O N M, or whatever?
There's, there's an O N M for after construction's complete.
Right, and that's, that's what that should be.
Generally, that's where we're at now.
Which we don't have, we don't have one of those.
See, we started, we started this process, us, going to the conservation commission, because we said, well, it's conservation plan, it was our understanding.
Very concerned.
They had to sign off on the certificate of compliance.
Yep.
And then they, and which they, which they then tell you that we've.
Have they done any, no?
No, 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 so, so we started with them, in fact, we were gonna, I was gonna go to ten meetings, and then it is, it gets canceled because of the snowstorms, the ice and cold that we had the other day. Uh, but anyway, and they were the ones that said to us, this, this O N M plan that I showed them, and the, uh, the as-built drawings, they didn't have them, they had never seen them. So I said, oh, okay, well, you know, I, I showed them, the ones, the ones that, that Stady gave to us, then I found out with all of his correspondence here that, that not only did, has he submitted, uh, uh, the, uh, O N M, the, the as-bills to the town, in this O N M, he did it back in, uh, uh, June, but he did it to you guys, and not to the, the conservation commission didn't get them, so I said, mm, you know.
Well, it's kind of two parallel tracks.
Yep, but again, that's, that's supposed to see this stuff too, so, so, and then I found out that what I had, because I, I just started coming, like, what, in December or something, I forget. What I, what I had was, was, uh, uh, in fact, not even the latest revision that Stady had given us, so I said, you know, can't you at least give us what the current, uh, 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 as-bills are? I mean, you know, where, you know, you know, we deserve enough of the, of the correct information. Now, I realized that most of the information on those drawings, for the revision one, was just, you know, technicalities, you know, they forgot to show something exactly.
The as-built changes.
But, but on the other hand, if they, if they say the drawings have been revised, okay, if something was missing at the site, I mean, is it, did they check to make sure that, that it was fixed at the site too, or just on paper, you know, that's, that, we wanna make sure that.
Well, that's part of their review, but I don't know if they've done their final as-built check.
No, that's why we wanted to do it, get it, get everyone put together.
I don't think they've done that part.
And that is what this was.
It's always staying.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's all we're, that's all we're doing.
What's the, what's the wetland situation? Is, is there conservation commission wetlands, or is it just all the stormwater?
There are both.
There are both, okay.
So if they went in, when he did the design.
Yeah.
There was wet, he did a wetland crossing to get the road in, across that little stream, so he's got an order of conditions, it's in force there.
Okay. He does.
So, I think, and it's, he can go, he could've gone to the concom first, he could've come to us first, he could've gone to both at the same time. I think he came to us first because we have V H B who's actively checking things out and doing all that, so I think what he wanted to do is get everything through, done with us, and then submit everything across the board, but.
I think it's more your time, I don't know, I enjoy it, I don't know, I enjoy it, really, I mean, it's volunteer, it's, it's a lot of work, you guys.
And just while we're on the roll, a couple of other issues, one of them was, one of the detention ponds, he let, the, the, one of the small ones, uh, he let just completely go, didn't do anything for years. And, and it was all overgrown with trees, well, then they went in, was it last summer, summer before, and they cleaned it up, they cleaned it out, they didn't clean it all out, they just cleaned most of it out. So there's still some trees that were, that are growing in there, and, and, and the, and the O N M plan that they, that they gave us said that, that.
They should take the trees.
That all the stuff should be out.
Well, the trees shouldn't be on the dikes, sometimes they're allowed in the, in the flat area, lower area, but.
Not, not.
I'm not sure what.
Yeah, not in the, not in the, uh.
Not on the burn.
Not in the four bays, and not in the, not in the.
Right, right.
So anyway, so that, that was, you know, part of it too, so, and we wanna make sure that, that, that they have, we don't wanna, we're gonna have to pull off those trees, because basically, if they're, if they're growing in, in the four bays, whatever, you go, you're not only gonna cut them out, you're gonna pull them out, because you're gonna, because, because it's the roots that are, that affect, you know?
Yeah.
The nice thing is we have America, we're all legal.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so anyway, anyway.
We don't tell too many people, because we're on video.
We're on video.
Huh?
We're on video.
Oh, sorry, oh, I don't know.
That's all right, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people inside and watch it anyway.
Well, listen, the conservation land on the other side is Eastman, Worcester, you know, what's his name, Worcester Land Trust.
Right, Worcester Land Trust, yes.
They go through that every single month and check it out, every single month.
Did the guy come to the?
And they said there's wildlife in there than any place he checks, and Worcester, you're talking to him.
Over by the golf courts?
No, no, just on the other side of us, as you come in, right there.
You mean near where they keep all the chemicals there, and then, yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah.
You know where, where you come, you come in Angel Brook, and you come to the area, you call the, you call the bridge, and there's a little, you got a little bend there?
And you cross.
Yeah. Yeah.
You walk in behind there, there's a, there's a, like a path that goes into the woods and.
Yes.
Next to the.
And the west, the wetlands.
Right, you'll call it whatever, right, goes to where the.
You said there's fish, there's fish in there in that brook, that, whatever that brook is called, that's in there, it's all kinds of wildlife, all kinds of birds and stuff, it's, it's amazing.
Oh, yeah.
Even all that stuff out in front, remember a few years ago with the, with the, uh, Asian lawn hoe, they.
Oh, they wiped it all.
And they made a field out of the woods out front?
Yeah.
Well, it's all pretty much, it's, it's filling in really nicely.
Well, that's right.
And, uh, and looks good, but there's a lot, there's, and there's a lot of wetlands in there, and a lot, a lot of critters in there, you know, because we see, we see.
It's the coyote inside, it's the cheffers.
Yeah, we see everything, we see, we see the, we see deer, uh, the coyotes, the foxes.
Deer, fox. Owls. Potters.
Owls, yeah.
Yeah.
All kinds of birds imaginable.
Yeah, we're, we're amazed, that small area, yeah, right in there behind where Bonzella is.
That's great.
The chairs facing the wrong way.
We should be happy.
Well, yeah, I have, we wanna keep it that way, too.
That little seat just got on the wrong way. Turn the other way around.
All those trees, when the Asian, they came in there and they had those big beaks in the wetland going to cut everything in, somebody raised, I wasn't there, somebody raised hell, I've gotta stop, thank God.
Yeah.
And then they rechecked it last summer, all the conservation people came in, but the beetle found out, so, which is.
It's good, they didn't destroy the, this is the habitat.
The woods looked like he has, with all houses, but I'll be back.
Alright, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying.
See you next time.
Have fun.
See you, thank you. We'll be back.
Alright.
Thank you.
After our sign, sign night.
No, not until we get something done.
Oh, I haven't signed anything yet.
Sorry, we're still doing what we're doing.
Annual report?
I'll take two. Alright, the signs, are you all set with what we're doing on signs? So we can get that all spread away?
I think so. So I mean, I'm sorry if I'm wrong.
What could be, what could possibly go wrong? What could possibly go wrong?
I'll do something hokey.
What was the first?
Was it hokey? I don't know.
Annual report?
Annual report.
Annual report.
Yeah, so I, today I finished going through the, the meeting minutes and the, the public hearing minutes for, what is it, fiscal twenty fifteen, I think it was.
All the meeting minutes?
All of them, and I'm just in the, I'm still in the process of actually updating sort of the statistics and the descriptions of the S P, I thought, and site plan reviews, and that was the year that we had Nua Circle, two, whatever it was, Prescott, two thirty-three or something. So, I'm, new, I'm up on Prescott.
Oh, yes, okay.
So I'm just going through, updating that, my plan is to forward the draft annual report to the board, so that we can review that at the next meeting. And the deadline for, that Nancy asked for was, I wrote it down, but I didn't, it's March twentieth somewhere, so we've got time.
Do you wanna present it at the meeting, at the town meeting? Just be, be, not reports from other boards then? We never do that.
No, we'll leave it to the sign by law, how's that?
Leave it to Melanie to present?
Yeah, by all means. And then she prints it off. Perfect.
Just leave it on the table, people can take it.
Oh, for the, yes, yep.
Reports from other boards? I never take them. Reports from other boards?
Nothing.
Um, meeting minutes?
Or do you have any reports from other boards?
No, I think I recorded last time.
Do we, the follow-up for the Z B A, the last two we sent a letter on, do we get a follow-up at our last meeting, or?
They already have the meetings. They texted it right away.
Emails saying they were not approved.
Both were denied.
Oh, and, and, I didn't understand when you said about the, on the one that was for the local business, there was another, we were gonna, there was another strategy you were thinking of?
Home occupation, you mean?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, I said it needs to go for variance, a special permit's allowed for, if he meets the, if he's in compliance with the whole section three point five.
Yep.
Since there were some things that he wasn't in compliance with, he has to go for a variance.
Which, show a hardship?
Yeah, which is not impossible, but a very hard thing.
Well, I think it's a home-based business with an enormous sign, Z B A will pass it with no problem.
No, but.
The, the one with, where the guy built his garage?
Thirty-eighth century.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's already been contacting us about getting the, because his lawyer is filing an appeal.
Okay, oh, an appeal of the special permit?
I guess.
The denial of a special permit, yeah.
Appeal with whom, us, or Z B A?
He would appeal, isn't it appeal in court?
I thought he was appealing to us. He appealed to us.
He can't appeal it to the same people who made the decision.
We have nine, we have ninety days to make a decision.
Well, you made it, yeah, red alert, yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, that starts a clock for an appeal.
But the thing is, well, the big, the big confusion was, and I think Billy had the same thing, was, is that we, most of us, or at least I did, thought that the garage was already there.
Yep.
Okay, it wasn't, it was being built. Then we found out that he's moving from where he is now, he's moving everything over to this garage, he's gonna put all his supplies in the garage area, and put the bookkeeper's office up on top of it, there's a two-family house, there's a two-family home there, you know, but according to, if you read the bylaw, the bylaw says home dwelling, and that's not a home, and it's not connected to the house. If the garage was connected to the home, then that would be a different story, but it's not, it's a separate entity, and now he's using it.
Oh, is that how you, okay.
Even though he's not having a business sign, he's not, he's still gonna be using it as his business, because all his supplies are gonna be there, you know, so.
I think the other thing that came up was that he was saying it was the, only the top floor was gonna be used for the business, because you kind of had this understanding the garage was already there for somebody else? And then it's not gonna be that way, it's gonna be that whole structure is all for the business.
Right, right.
He's going to store, he's going to buy the things and he's storing, stocking.
And it was, what's a little ten percent of the property can be for the business or something like that?
Twenty-five percent of the dwelling.
And of the dwelling, and I think that that's where it went over.
Well, it's zero for the dwelling.
Right, the dwelling is a separate house.
If you read the way that the building inspector, when he sent us his statement, it read, at least the way I interpreted it, was, is that the garage was already built. It was an existing building, and all he wanted to do was put, we found out at the beginning that it wasn't an existing building, that he was in the process, it was being built at that time.
So he's appealing, okay.
So that, that's what I understood.
Next. Do you know other reports? Do you wanna do minutes? Do you want, I think you have two minutes.
Couple of things in here.
Just look at the minutes. Should we review the sexual harassment policy? Oh, here it is.
Complete streets funding program portal.
Did anybody have any comments about the minutes?
Rajesh and I are going to come to the streets next week.
Oh, good.
All right, all right, we'll do that.
Sorry.
He's got to it, sorry.
I was just going to.
So you're going to the, and that's, do you need any help from us?
Can you make it? Tuesday, nine to, nine to noon. Thank you for offering, but we'll take care of it.
I don't know, advice, comments, a letter?
Lunch, dinner.
Lunch? All right, so no help from us, that's done, thank you for attending.
We'll let you know, yes.
Bike park pro, bicycle parking program, city of Worcester?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Okay, so everybody can ride their bikes in Worcester and park them someplace?
No, they give you fundings to put the stalls, or the, the racks.
Yeah, this was for, yeah, I, we got this as an email, and it was for the Central Massachusetts region.
Let's see.
No, all the towns can apply.
Right, a town can apply.
That's my understanding.
We can get a hundred thousand dollars?
We can put one near the library.
Isn't there one near the library already?
Or in the town center?
I think the, the library put their own in.
Town center? The park area.
Is there one here?
I don't know if there isn't one there.
No, there is none.
Well, if you know where you want one, I know someone who has the Eagle Scout Insulate, he had put one in up at the high school, a couple, last year or the year before, he's at now college, so I guess it was probably a couple of years ago, and he had a couple of them, so he's, I think he still has one in his.
How about in the park?
Looking for a place to put it.
How about, how about in the park, Goodell Park, do they have?
Where, where would you put it?
Near the parking, the, they park the cars.
Yeah, maybe near the.
Yeah.
The kids can go park their bicycle, right? Maybe they can take up two car parkets and then put this thing.
But there's other things to change your bike to there anyhow. I mean, there's a fence to change your bike to.
No, if you have a, you know, bike stand, that'll be good, rather than fencing, put it behind, next to the fence, right?
You wanna contact the Parks Commission, just see if they have any, if they would like, where would they like one?
Yeah. Do you have a copy of this? Yeah.
All right, let us know next meeting if they want one from him, from Larry?
I think so. Make sure, but it used to be in there.
He's, he's an alum, so he'll, we can contact.
That's right, yeah, that's right, planning board alum there.
Planning board alum there. Okay, now can we do the minutes? Does anybody have any edits?
They were good.
Did I mention anything about me by name?
Motion to approve the minutes, and.
Do you wanna do both, we can do the meeting minutes, January twenty-seventh, and the public hearing minutes for Cumberland Farms on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor? What else we have here? Keystone obligation issue, oh, here's that email he was talking about.
Better late than never.
Don't eat that, don't eat that anymore. That's why I don't? Well, here, of course I don't eat them here. All right, I don't know what to do with sexual harassment policy or nondiscrimination.
Put in your file. Harass, don't discriminate.
I don't know what, as, as a board, we're supposed to acknowledge. Did everybody acknowledge receiving them? Aye? All right, good. Got it. No, not yet. Cumberland Farms, seventeen hundred. Seventeen hundred for Cumberland Farms, I don't like this Graves company, we need to. Seventeen hundred and Cumberland Farms is done? How much, we, we only have a couple of little bills for Graves before that, right?
We have one other one before that, that's just the latest one that came in.
Oh, maybe it'll be more.
But they also, they didn't attend the hearings, so that was a little difficult, but they were busy, short notice.
Or whatever.
And then VHB on.
That was a good help.
We should put on the agenda the construction letter for Cumberland Farms.
Oh, yeah, with special instructions, because Graves hasn't done it.
Right, okay.
Also construction.
Construction, right. Review, review draft, the construction letter.
Do you have a timesheet, or not yet? You should start just signing them yourself, or is that a checks and balances issue?
Well, if you were in Boylston, you could do it.
Well, it's a good thing we're in West Boylston. Do you want to sign, we've got a few signatures in this year, especially concerned.
No, go right ahead.
We did send one email, right, two hundred and eighty-one, that was.
I just got those from Wayne today, he sent me an email the other day that something had, had issues with their accounting system, and there was a few invoice invoices, they didn't know if we even had. So I went through, and we could not have those three invoices, so I have sent them to me today, and that's why we've got Holy Cross right now, and we haven't done anything with that. It's from November, so they're the only one that had money in the account, though, Nua and.
Okay, so there's more invoices, these ones, these ones covered.
Those are okay, those, there's money in there.
All right, so you, you know what you have to do?
Yeah, yeah, but Angel Brook, we did send one for this amount, right?
Not that one, no.
I thought I did.
No, I, I can't find it, if you can find a duplicate of that invoice number and that amount, then I can go in, but I don't have.
No, I don't know whether, no, 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 Ma, what I'm saying is, you know, I don't know whether you received the check from Angel Brook.
Not for, not for the one I just gave you tonight, because I've already checked my account, I mean, I couldn't, there's no invoice number or that amount.
Okay, I will ask them.
And there's no money in the account?
No, they don't have any money, I'll leave it to them.
Can you share that list, I'll leave it for you.
Now we can motion to adjourn. Whoever wants to do it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Here we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good. Have a good night, everybody.